Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March 4th. Welcome to the group of students. So for your information, I'm chairing the meeting today. I'm councillor from Word 5. That's Mayor Jaworski, but we rotate for this meeting, so welcome. Are there any disclosures of community interest and the general nature thereof? Okay, so seeing none, we just move on to number two now? All right. Is there someone who'd like to move to approve the minutes of the February 4th meeting? Councillor Beath, seconded. Councillor Freeman, all in favor? All right, everyone. There are no delegations, no presentations. And we have three consent, three reports on consent. So do I have a mover and seconder to get them on the floor? Mayor Jaworski, Councillor Hamer. Oh, yes, Councillor Bonagor, I believe you have a comment, is that right? No, sorry. What about one of the consent motions? The resident? Sorry. No? Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay.
For clarity, I discussed with staff earlier, and it's everything's okay at the moment. Nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and then just one comment. There's the owner endorsement of the Drinking Water Quality Management System Operational Plan. So the city is the manager or the owner of the drinking water system. And so New Council had a training, and I just wanted to acknowledge Paula Mendez, who organized that for us. And it was really interesting, and I had no idea how much responsible cities were for water systems before I got onto council. And so I just really appreciate how important a system that is that we often take for granted. So thanks to staff and to everyone who organized that training for us. So can, oh, all right, let's call the vote. Everyone, all in favor? Everyone. That's everyone.
You're setting the bar too high for enthusiasm. I'll have to get up, get my game up.
I'm this nervous, my heart is pounding that fast. This is the first time I've ever been up here. It's a really nice view, but I am a little enthusiastic about it. Okay, on to number six, staff reports. So unsanctioned public gathering task force update. We have Commissioner Mark Dijkstra coming up to present.
Can you hear me okay, council? Great. I'm going to leave the microphone at that level then, thank you. Yes, good afternoon. My name is Mark Dijkstra, Commissioner of Community Services, here to provide an update on the work of the Unsanctioned Public Gathering Task Force. The presentation today will provide an overview of the task force composition. I will speak to the evolution and trajectory of unsanctioned public gathering. I will then speak to the mandate, discuss some of the milestones that we've achieved, as well as the work that's been done so far on the key problem statements, the decision-making criteria. Spend some time both on research and consultation where we're at, and then I'll outline where we're going in terms of next steps. The committee is comprehensive, and as I noted myself, I am co-chairing the task force along with Tom Bursey, who's here with us today. I'm going to introduce some of the other task force members, so please feel free to raise your hand as I go through the list of individuals here. Assisting with our facilitation is Darcy Delmar, professor from U of W. He's not able to be here today. Our research partner and member is Richard Ibach, he is here, noted. Assisting us is Adam Louder from the CAO's office. So in terms of, you can see the list there, but I just want to acknowledge James Craig from the Town and Gown, Larry Richardson from the Macam, the McGregor Albert community area, Stephen Van Valkenburg, Waterloo Regional Pyromedic Services. There is significant student representation, and I don't think all of them are here, but I'm just going to notes the members, Sean Cruz from WLU Student Union, Ben Easton from U of W Feds, as well as Amy Kalma from Conestoga College, Alan Minaj from WLU Graduate Student Association, and Naima Samuel from the Graduate Student Association. In terms of institution representation on the committee, Chris Reed is here, I see, from U of W. Leanne Holland Brown is here as well, from WLU, and Brenda Cassidy from Conestoga College, she's working with us. So that represents those in the audience from the task force. Also with us here to answer any question, I know David McMurray from WLU, and Chief Brian Larkins with us today. So comprehensive group, and we're working through the task at hand. In terms of the evolution and trajectory, you know, we understand that unsanctioned public gatherings are growing locally and in Canada, and we realize the response to the events are increasing in scope and scale. There are neighborhood impacts, we realize those around the event location. There's also impacts on our first responders, we as a municipality, our institutions as well, whether it's the schools or the hospital as well. The costs are increasing, what we see as a community and task force to unsustainable levels. The last point I note there is references the operational plan, and just want to speak to that for one or two minutes. The agencies that I've introduced, they come together very strongly with a collective response and a collaborative response that is at a good point at this time. We work right year-round, pretty much, right after the day of the event, we're debriefing, we're continuing that work year-round, so the agency and stakeholder teams are working year-round on addressing this matter. We work very collaboratively with the student unions, associations, I noted them, and we really share and speak to the message about smart choices in terms of attending the event, the need for safety, and also the importance of respect. And that will be a focus of the upcoming Door Knocker campaign on March 13th, so a week Wednesday, so you're more than welcome to attend and join myself, but it's a real focus on a peer-to-peer conversation about the event and education. For the 2019 plan, the response is strong, in place, final details are being worked through, but there again, it's a plan that is well put in place. We are recognized as leaders in our response for the day of events. Others are asking us to comment and share our insights. However, change is needed, we recognize that, and hence council has, through the mayor, and the mayor's advanced the task force. It was started up in April of 2018 as a reminder, and really focused on the need to reduce the impact, refocus the impact, looked at the need for prevention. And the task force would be running for two years approximately, with a two- to five-year focus on the implementation and rollout. I can report to date, the task force has had five meetings, very productive, and we're off and running and really getting into the meat of things. In terms of the mandate, it's noted there, and speaks to the report before you this afternoon, and the information report goes through these next couple of points, but it speaks to the assessment of the growth of unsanctioned public gatherings, we want to understand that. Maybe there's some opportunities, but also get a good handle on the cons, understand the impact to the community and the service providers, and then focus on making those recommendations to council, and then to our broader task force members on how to appropriately manage unsanctioned public gatherings. Terms of milestones, we've worked on the problem statement and the key decision criteria, I'll speak to that momentarily. We've advanced research and an environmental scan. We're now into a real, through the month of March, ideation and consultation. We will then, towards the end of the second quarter, look at option identification and a draft approach. We want to share those and be back to council mid-fall to provide an update on some of the draft recommendations, and then look towards some further consultation feedback on those. Again, the goal is to be back early 2020 with some recommendations, and then work through towards implementation. In terms of the problem statement, four key areas identified by the task force, the importance of public safety for the attendees, the first responders in the community, the reputational risk, so noted there, some behaviors don't reflect the values of our community or its institutions, and so we want to address that risk. The costs, they're increasing and not sustainable. You'll see in our report over the last two years, or the last year, the two events are driving us beyond the $1 million mark, as noted. The crowd behavior too, there is elements that are increasing with the broader crowd, there's risk there, and we want to address those and make sure those are looked at. As we are about to receive ideas, we wanted to ensure that we had a decision criteria, and we're sharing that with council and the public as we go. We see the successful approach will enhance community and personal safety, it'll create those peer-to-peer driven cultural change that we see as needed. It'll be cost-effective, financially sustainable, and operationally feasible, and it'll also yield positive collective outcomes for stakeholders. With respect to the work of research, Dr. Ibach is working closely with us, he's done literature review and some initial case work review, and really has identified that there's very little research completed specific to the phenomena of unsanctioned public gatherings. Yes, there's research on political or celebratory gatherings, but with this focus, this event type, there is none. And that's where we feel the task force will be pioneering new research. We want to really understand what's the underlying motive for attendance, is it FOMO, which is the fear of missing out, stress relief, just wanting to have fun, other, what is it? But we want to get to the heart of that matter. Knowing what that motivation is will enable us to target solutions, and also we want to make sure when we do the research, there's a variety of methods to introduce, deploy to achieve the results we're looking for. As well, dovetailing with that a bit, is that consultation that we want to have with, on different levels, multifaceted levels here, and it's whether we've met with a neighborhood group, the McGregor Albert group, we did so last week, but really at this time to get the message out that we are looking for ideas, solutions, thoughts, our Engage Waterloo platform is live today. There's a series of questions there that we want to hear from folks, on your opinion of the event, have you attended, solutions as well, so that will be running. I've noted the Door Knocker campaign, it gives us opportunity to connect with the student population and residents throughout the neighborhood. Another key driver that the task force is working towards is shortly after St. Patrick's Day on March 25th, is to have a student ideation session, it's basically a world cafe. The mayor is inviting key student leaders from all three institutions to provide an opportunity to gather, understand insights, look for solutions. As we advance through the month of March 2 and into April, hoping to have some on-campus inputs at the various school locations. The task force members are also involved in some of their own consultation and outreach, and this is where you see the, there's association input, is what we're referring to it as. Whether it's the university administrators, they recently met on February 14th and had a good dialogue about the problem. We know it's widespread in terms of the other university communities, so we want to engage, and we have engaged them, and WLU, David McMurray, took a strong initiative there to pull that together. We will, we realize that the dialogue will continue, we look forward to that conversation moving forward. The Town and Gown Ontario Conference in June will provide further connection points for all those institutions. I know under the police chief's heading, Chief Larkin has been working closely with his other chiefs in the various university towns, cities, and again, having some conversations on the matter and solutions, and looking for opportunities to advance the discussion. Similarly, for our municipal enforcement group, Shane Turner's leading that charge and connecting with the other cities and towns. In terms of the last bullet there, the Large Urban Mayor's Caucus of Ontario, that's referred to as Lumpco, Mayor Jaworski attends that on behalf of the city. He was there most recently at the meeting on February 14th. This has enabled him time to share some of the toolbox items that we wish to tweak and lobby the province to support us on. And there's three key areas that the focus is being brought forward, and the first one being around the need for identification for individuals who contravene local bylaws, we want that piece of ID when we do lay a charge. We also want to look at default fines being applied to a person's driver's license, so if they default, the fine goes to your driver's license, and also escalated fines for specific issues and events that occur. So those three areas are where we can see some initial work, the task force and our municipal enforcement have looked at that as a current initiative, and the mayor is carrying that forward through the Lumpco and up to the province, and I'm sure he'll speak more to that shortly. In terms of next steps, spoke about the consultation, the idea generation that's occurring, we're moving forward with the research. The idea and review and analysis will occur throughout the second quarter in the summer. We look at those identification of options and consultation of options in sort of the mid-fall range, and then again with the recommendations early 2020, and then looking for opportunities to implement. Just prior to taking questions, some comments, and just as the task force was deliberating at their last meeting, just I offer some summary remarks on the work of the task force and key learnings. They recognize they're advancing a collective approach to addressing the issue through a strategic planning type of process. We realize, I think unfortunately though, that we're leading on a strong operational plan and a strong task force plan, so that's noted. We sense that we're a catalyst for a call to action by other groups, so other universities, the police chiefs, the administrators, we've helped to advance that. We do recognize that the problem is complex and very multifaceted. We've truly identified that as we've talked, we've heard some various opinions from the stakeholders, we've thought about ideas ourselves, but we realize the problem's complex and multifaceted. We also recognize that change will take multiple years. We know there's no research studies that exist directly with this phenomenon, so we want to be leading to understand what's needed for that culture change I spoke to earlier. And the solutions must engage the young adults, the students that are attending, and we aim to do that over the next month. So the work is advancing, and again, detailed, and I trust this provides council with a general overview of where we're at in the process, and myself and those I've introduced are willing and able to take questions from council. Chair Vasek.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Dijkstra. Are there any questions for the delegation? All right, okay. Councillor Beath, Councillor Hamer, and Councillor Bonagor?
Through you, Chair Vasek. Thank you, Commissioner, for that report. A couple of things, I feel like we're just, we're always like drawing attention to this, and that, you know, there's just going to be more and more folks coming up to the event. But my question is, and I see Tracy's here, but has the BIA been invited to sit at the table? I just, I just think that we're, Ezra's, I don't think Ezra is in within the BIA boundary, but there's lots of expertise in, in particular, bar owners in the uptown, that deal with crowds and students and drinking and all this kind of stuff. Anyway, so I just, I just wondered if that might be something that the committee might consider, is inviting, you know, an expert in particular, a bar owner or two, to sit on the task force, to maybe help up, come up with some ideas for your, going forward.
Yes, in response, through Chair Vasek to Councillor Beath, definitely that is part of the ideation and consultation phase, so we welcome feedback, comments from groups such as the BIA, other groups too, and just receiving a proposal or expert advice. The Waterloo Region Tourism Marketing Corp. is another one that we've flagged or identified that can potentially have an opinion, definitely an opinion, but also some thoughts around maybe solutions. So other groups like that, yes, we will be connecting with in the near future.
Thank you through you, Chair Vasek. Commissioner, the report is very well done, thank you for pulling it all together, and it is good to see that there is a thoughtful review process undertaken, and I do, we do appreciate that it takes time to come up with the solutions, and you do need to talk to many, many stakeholders, and I think the outline certainly has you going that direction. Can you share with us what the plans will be for this year, and then the intervening year? Because in the report, you've mentioned it'll take really before it's fully implemented, five years, and we still have a lot of events that may happen during that time. So how are we going to be addressing those?
Through Chair Vasek to Councillor Hamer, so may look for some support if on the operational team, whether Shane or Tom want to come and speak to the management of the event, but the plan is, you know, in terms of dealing with the day of event, that's solid, similar to years past, there are a number of multi-agencies involved, whether it's the police, city, the paramedics, so that is continuing, fire services as well, our partnership with special constables, that continues, and we continue to see where we can improve, look for efficiencies on the plan itself. Then we are looking at those, you know, what can we do now? And that's perhaps the, an example best, what are we doing now? What can we do on the municipal enforcement end? So get that initiative going, move forward, not just be stagnant. What can we do in terms of other safety measures? Those are being in place. So, yeah, so we're continuing to advance the overall strategic approach, but operationally, where we can find efficiencies, we're driving those, and where we can do things better, we're doing that.
Just to follow, so I appreciate hearing that as it continues to go on, if there are best practices or different things that can be improved, that will be implemented, you're not waiting until the end of the plan to come up with the strategies?
No, that's, that's correct. Again, through the chair to the councillor, if we get to a period closer to homecoming where we could implement something, we will take that opportunity. If the partners around the table feel something can be implemented, we will do so. So we're not waiting until the ultimate final recommendations in 2020. If there's something that we can advance or test, we will be doing that.
And just a final comment, I think that's a great direction to take, is being able to continue to ensure the safety of the public and have all of the parties, partners involved, making sure that they can do the response that they need to be doing. It is important that we keep improving as we go along, so thank you for that.
Through you, Chair Vasek. I really just wanted to make a comment. I really want to thank the task force for all of the effort you're putting into this. I mean, it's, it's a big gnarly problem, and we really appreciate your efforts to help unravel it, and I'm really looking forward to getting community input. Lots of people across uptown and across the city have ideas that they would like to put forward in terms of what we could do with unsanctioned gatherings. This is your opportunity. So please, Engage Waterloo is the website, fill out the survey, your input is going to be really vital to helping come forward with some possible solutions. And I'd also would like to remind folks that this isn't the only thing happening in the city when it comes to St. Patrick's Day. We had some meetings earlier this morning with the Irish Real Life Festival, and they've got some great things going on all through spring break and on St. Patrick's Day, if you're looking for something else to do, just that I put that out there.
Councillor Freeman, yeah?
Through you, Chair Vasek. Thanks, Commissioner Dijkstra. Can you help me to better understand, you know, where, what the end goal is, like where you're looking for all these meetings to lead to? I mean, I hear, I hear lots of comments about safety and management, and, and all of those things all make sense to me. Increasing tools for ticketing and, and being forthright with issuance of tickets, but, you know, a lot of people tell me they really want this to end. And so is that the ultimate end goal, that to come up with strategies that will actually will effectively discourage and discontinue these massive events from forming?
Great. Through Councillor Vasek to Councillor Freeman, great question, I think on the minds of many. So the goal is to, you know, we looked at the decision criteria, and a couple of key points there to reiterate, enhancing community and personal safety. So yes, that's an issue. Create that peer-driven culture change, we want to see that change be cost-effective, financially sustainable, and operationally feasible. That's, you know, a big piece. I think safety and those costs are driving to a point where it's not, we identify that that's not being sustainable. What could that million dollars do? What could all the staff time do that we're spending on this, and on pretty much a year-round basis now? So yes, minimize the size of it. Can we end it? Big challenge there. Would that be nice? Yes, I agree that that would be good, but we need to look for each sort of action, there's a reaction, we want to make sure that's strategically thought through, and that's where we need all the people around the task force to have their input. So when an idea comes forward, we vet it through them, we vet it on this decision criteria, and then we look for that, for the solution that meets these objectives. So while I want to say, yes, it'll be ended and no longer, could take time, takes a whole, you know, four to six years potentially, with the whole movement of students from afrosh to when they graduate, that's the trajectory. Do we want something better for all? Yes, that's around the table. Everybody wants to see the effort and the dollar spent on this going somewhere else to be a better, better outcomes for the community and those all participating as well.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Jaworski has a question too, comment?
Thank you, through the chair. I think early in the presentation, Mark, you mentioned FOMO, fear of missing out. I think what we need is phobe, fear of being on Ezra. Maybe that would be something we need to build up. Build up that phobe.
I write that one down, code of the day.
I think the, you know, thank you for, thanks everybody for showing up here, the people on the task force, the people in the neighborhood who are impacted by it, all the chiefs who are here today, thank you very much for coming out, all of you. And, you know, I think that's one thing that you alluded to, Commissioner Dijkstra, is the opportunity to add more oomph to our bylaws. And I think when I had the opportunity last week to be at the province, mentioning it to them as well, they were interested in this, this is something they took note on, and so I'll be introducing that as a notice of motion probably two, three hours, whenever we get out of here tonight, as an opportunity. When I happened to meet with the mayors two weeks ago, as you mentioned, Mayor of Kingston was concerned, as they've already gone up to 10,000 people on that day, and I mentioned to him that that's only two years ago for us, and so the, it's happening to all municipalities. So I'm wondering what, what are you hearing from staff or your counterparts at other university towns about this? Are they, are they looking at the task force? Are they, do they have their own ideas? What's sort of the scoop on that?
Through the chair to the mayor, good question, because, you know, I don't want to be, you know, Waterloo's leader in so many areas, I don't want to be a leader quite in this area of, and that's where there is that challenge. The peers are looking to us for solutions, driving the process, our operational plan. So yes, they're looking to us, but I was able to attend the February 14th meeting of the university administrator, so I had a good connection and time to advocate what we're doing, share the story, engage with that group, talk to peers, you know, closely with London, some similarities there that we're dealing with, and having that conversation with them, university administrators, bylaw, police at that location, all engaged. So the conversation is advancing, and looking forward to them to create a nugget that we can capture and perhaps advance sooner than the other cities or towns. So while it's, we're leading, we're leading for change that's needed, so it's a good opportunity. So it's a good opportunity with the peers across the province.
Okay, thank you for taking the lead on this for the city.
Councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Vasik, and thank you, Mark, and through you to the task force for the challenging work that's ahead of you, that you're all signed on to engage with very deliberately and thoughtfully and thoroughly, and in a university town to tread new ground in terms of research, which hopefully will be helpful to many folks. I think one thing I wanted to flag and share that wasn't in your presentation, but I think is a positive development, and I know one that at Town and Gown we had talked for a number of years about, is the coordination of homecomings among a variety of universities. And that came out in the press only a couple of weeks ago. We'd been talking about the idea of consolidating homecoming weekends among the key participants of areas of problems for a number of years. And with Council of Ontario universities jumping on to that bandwagon this fall, there will only be two homecoming weekends among those universities rather than six or seven or eight. And hopefully that should provide a significant reduction in out-of-town traffic that just spends most of the fall break having a really good time at homecomings across the province. There are fewer weekends for them to concentrate their enjoyment, and I hope that that will be helpful. I think that's one outcome, one positive outcome, that's an example of what happens when we collectively work in partnership between the city, between our university colleagues, between various emergency services personnel, to really understand a problem, to come up with ideas. That was an idea we had a number of years ago, but it took some work to be able to implement and convince others it was worth the hard work of changing football schedules. Football thankfully isn't as big a deal here as it is south of the border. That may never have happened then, but I think we were able to achieve that. So I wanted to highlight that as one of those areas that if we focus our attention and have some ideas, we can get some action. And so I use that as hopefully indicative of where this process will go. But the other thing I did want to share, particularly as we have some new colleagues around our table, is this is a wicked problem, as Councillor Bonaguir had highlighted. But it's not one where the city or its partners have stood still. The idea of an off-site sanctioned gathering has been tried at what we thought was significant cost at the time, but as it turns out, it was a very insignificant cost relative to what we're seeing being spent now. It's added zeros. And it worked until it didn't, I think would be the best way to describe how that had happened. So, and we know our partners at Laurier have worked with attendants and visitors over those key dates at their student residences. And we know we've been doing this door-knocker program with an expanding number of people for a few years to talk to folks. So we haven't been standing still as we've tried to solve this. We've continued to try out ideas as we collectively have thought of them, but this is a great opportunity for us to hear more broadly from the community through Engage Waterloo Region, and to continue to use all the channels and all the tools that, Commissioner, you've highlighted in your presentation. So I just wanted to provide some of that context, some of the results that we have seen from past efforts, and that we keep trying, and we're going to keep trying. And so I appreciate the efforts of the task force to give us a new round of ideas and a new sense of resolve for action in the coming weeks and months ahead.
Just back to Chair, through the chair to Councillor Henry, thank you for those comments, and it's really, we echo them as a task force, that it's that nudge process where we get an idea, it sparks a conversation, it moves the needle around, and that's really what we're talking about for the task force, getting that information, helping it, helping those ideas move forward in a strong collective process. So that's great. We won't stand still, we'll keep moving the agenda along.
Councillor Bottomley.
Thank you through you, Chair Vasik. Again, I just wanted to echo my colleagues, great work on the presentation here, and I think really identifying the problems as you've laid them out is really important for us to move forward in order to be able to find solutions. So I think that's great. One of the things that I just want to speak to, because we've been spending time discussing this sort of negative thing that's occurring in the community, but I don't want this to be a pile-on or a demonization of the students within our community. And I want to make sure that going forward, any of our communications around this event also speak to how important students are to the city of Waterloo. We are an education city. Students provide so much to us from an economic development perspective and a vibrancy within our community. And I just want to make sure that as we're going through these processes, we're not entirely just focusing on the negative aspects of this party and speaking to what the students do bring to the community going forward. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
So if I can respond or just add further comments to the councillor, definitely an understanding we have, we recognize, and you know, and the other roles I have within the community service portfolio, the benefits of the institutions to our city are great, and we need to recognize that with it become there is this issue. And also, we need to recognize, we try to use a broader term than students, to recognizing young adults and other folks are attending this. So those pieces are in front of the task force. We take efforts to make sure we're communicating a strong message that respects those points. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Sounds like council's very appreciative, so thanks for all your work, about what you're doing in the medias, and then in the longer term, in terms of research. I mean, I'm a social researcher, so I really appreciate that you're identifying the problems so that the right intervention is put forward, rather than just trying something that hasn't been founded at all in some sort of problem identification. So, yeah, I think we all really appreciate the short-term, long-term strategies for problem identification, the communications and the engagement. So thank you. Can I have someone to move? Councillor Bonaguir, a second. Councillor Hamner, all in favor? Thanks. We just approved the report as information, right?
Correct.
Okay, just for everyone's information. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Up next, we have the Uptown Public Realm Strategy Final Report Presentation, prepared by Janice Mitchell, and...
Sure.
Thank you. Are you Janice Mitchell?
Yes, I am.
Hello.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We've chatted, but we haven't actually met.
Yeah.
So it's nice to meet you all. Thank you, I am Janice Mitchell, I was the project manager on the Uptown Public Realm Strategy, and I'm happy to be here tonight to launch this final step. In a moment, I'm going to introduce the consultant, Brenda Webster Twill, and I'm just going to take a moment to touch on a few things, sort of from the staff perspective in terms of providing an overview. Yeah?
I think we're asking if you could move it up a little bit so that we can hear you a little bit better, please?
Is that better? 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 Okay. Is that all right? Is that better? Okay, I'll shift. Okay. So from, as I said, the staff report, whoops, deals with a few things. So before I introduce Brenda to actually talk about the strategy itself, I just want to touch on a few things that you see in the staff report. So it gives an overview of the strategy and talks about some implementation considerations, and also presents a guideline, a POPs guideline, or a guideline for privately-owned publicly-accessible spaces. So I'm just going to touch really quickly on those before I reach out to Brenda. So a few things on the strategy itself. We've been working on this since about the fall of 2017, and we are hoping to get councillor or council approval tonight. Just a general comment, because I know Brenda's going to talk about the details, but in my experience at the city here, this has been one of the really the most fulsome public processes that we've had. From start to finish, we used a full range of techniques, in my opinion, including some charrettes, some stakeholder workshops, an online presence and social media, a public forum. And it really, I think, reflects in the final project that we had a lot of grassroots involvement and a lot of people actually putting pen to paper. So the document that we're bringing forward today is a little different than the draft that was presented in September to council and has been on the website, but not too too much. I think it sort of reflects that we had a good product to begin with, and we've tweaked it a little bit and are looking for approval of the final tonight. So just in terms of some thoughts on implementation, I know it might seem like the cart before the horse, because we're talking about implementation before you've seen the strategy, but I know that you've all sort of taken a look at it. So I just want to touch on some highlights that I think are really important. As I said, I think this document is improved from the draft in that the draft was really good at presenting buckets of opportunities, so all sorts of actions and priority initiatives that really looked at sort of how we can move forward and improve the public realm. We've sort of brought in some, what I'll call sort of a reality check, some recognition of constraints or considerations for implementation, things like the floodplain. To be really clear that although we're, you know, we're being aspirational and we're looking forward to improvements, there are some constraints. You know, things will cost, they'll take time, we have a floodplain that we're dealing with. So the document is a little more rounded out in terms of recognizing some of those constraints. The other thing I'll say is there's some priority initiatives that will pop out at you, and Brenda's going to talk about those, so I won't talk about them in detail. But if you kind of cheat and look ahead in the document and only look at them, you're going to miss a lot. There's a lot of actions all the way through the document. It's important not to just jump to the priority initiatives, because there will be many opportunities outside of those initiatives that will be important. And as opportunities arise, we'll be able to look at those opportunities as well. It's not just about the priority initiatives. The other thing I'll say too is if it seems a little overwhelming, because it's quite a lengthy document, there's lots in there, it's about 150 pages, if it seems overwhelming, we're just going to get started. You know, there's lots of things that the priority initiatives are a long-term strategy or speak to a long-term change. There's lots of short-term and tactical things that we can start doing, things like planters and wrapping utility boxes and graffiti programs, that kind of thing. So there's lots of things that we can get started with fairly quickly. On that note, one of the things that staff brought forward that thought was important that builds on one specific goal in the strategy is a POPs guideline, or a privately-owned, publicly-accessible space guideline. There are opportunities as we work with the development community and have proposals for public spaces or spaces on sites that can be publicly accessible. We want to make sure that we make the best use of those opportunities. It can be through processes like parkland dedication or bonusing applications where a community benefit is proposed. We want to make sure that it's clear in working with the development community what our expectations are in terms of what types of spaces those are, how big they are, how they're signed so that people understand that they're publicly accessible, those types of things. So we brought forward this guideline that talks about why POPs are important, this in terms of these private spaces or privately-owned, publicly-accessible spaces, how we'll get them, so there's the processes, and what the design criteria are for them. So we just felt that that was one really important implementation piece. It's really just one piece, but it's an example of how the strategy won't just be things on the ground, but guidelines and things changes to the zoning bylaw or zoning or urban design guidelines, those types of things. So this is one piece that we thought we could bring forward fairly quickly. So with that kind of framework and background, I'm going to introduce Brenda Webster Twill, who was the project manager from the consulting team, StanTech Urban Places, and Brenda.
Hey. Just, I was here. Just right there. Okay, thanks. Hi, everyone. It's been a wonderful journey with the city of Waterloo, from the initial mapping, my uptown, through the charrette, to the public forum, and the great meetings that we had to bring many of our visions down to quick tactical urbanism ideas. I'll just do a quick overview of the project over the year and a half. So first, we described for everybody, we had a definition that we all agreed on, which was that public realm is all the spaces between the buildings. And of course, that does include, as Janice mentioned, the privately-owned, publicly-accessible spaces. And so we wanted to break the project down into systems from the very beginning, and as we moved through the charrette. So even in the charrette, we had several tables set out, and the public at large was welcome, and we, one group would talk about parks, another group about streets, and so on and so forth. And we developed over time the system mapping of uptown, and then looked at moments where they overlaid with each other, from the public feedback and from our sort of subject matter expertise, to finding three authentic locations to amplify what uptown is truly about, and they are the Laurel Greenway, the Civic Common, which is right outside the door here, and Willis Way. So as I mentioned, we had a kickoff way back in October of 2017, and here we are today at council after that great growth of a project. So we started with recognizing that uptown is on the cusp of great growth, and the ION is key to that change, and we see the ION as a point of engagement. So here's one of the first maps we did with one of the tables, and we set out, how can you, if you stand at the platforms of this future ION, how do you breathe, where are you in the LRT system, how do you move to important spaces within uptown, and how do you begin to create a public realm that can grow with uptown? So as I mentioned, then, after the public forum and the charrettes, we created a series of new maps that were really drawn with our stakeholders and our public, that set out the key moments for parks and open spaces, how to connect, what great historic buildings frame the city currently, and how can we improve that framing, and some of what was discussed in the previous discussion, which is how do we celebrate and how do we hold events that are significant and in control? Anyway, so here we are with the three priority initiatives mapped out. Laurel Greenway, which is a linear park that connects the Greater Supertrails that connect all through the region of Waterloo, and really finding a place for it within uptown. Willis Way, which is the youngest street and has these great parks that bookend it. How can we really clearly mark that out and work with it as we move forward? And finally, contrasting the actual oldest public square, which is the original public square, which is Heritage Green and Brewmeister. And we have this opportunity next to it, which is just outside the door, which is the Waterworks, to connect those three as a kind of figure in the ground that we build around. So here's the Laurel Greenway set in, that moves from Waterloo Park, which is also, of course, a significant open space for uptown, or just outside of uptown, through King and Regina and up through the Laurel Greenway. Again, revisiting what we have named the Civic Common, and it's the figure in the ground, it's also the relationship to the Allen Street LRT station up to this Civic Common, and then as a terminus for Regina in the north end, and how can we green Regina and create that long view down to this tremendous park with a historic building in it. Finally, Willis Way, which has already just been refurbished, and how do we create it, again, as a figure that connects to two parks that could be better used if we really show how they are connected to Willis Way, and create safe and inviting ways to connect from the Willis Way, New Willis Way Station, to the parks and to the great shopping along Willis Way. Implementation? Well, Janice spoke a little bit about that, just to review the priority initiatives and how they connect to the ideas that they grew out of. They are the, they literally grow like the seed from that platform of the LRT, they are proximate to population growth. And then, of course, how will they be implemented? Well, as opportunities emerge, whether it be, as Janice said, within this figure or within the larger document where we mention systems and moments for opportunities, we will dovetail those together so that when we do city works, we take that as an opportunity to begin to implement this public realm strategy. And here's a vision of unwrapping one of those opportunities, which is Civic Common. And that's it.
Thanks so much. Are there questions for either of the delegations? Mayor Jaworski, councillor, did you ever hand it? Oh, councillor Bonaguir.
Thank you through the chair. Could you go back a couple of slides, the Civic Common one, two, three slides ago? And you can just use the up arrows on the keyboard there.
Thank you.
I have to hit escape first.
Uh huh, okay.
There you go. Yeah, that's the one.
Can I?
I wanted to see the...
Thank you. Someone else did that for me.
So it's plus or minus that one, the Civic Common slide. So it's plus or minus that one, the Civic Common slide. There. So I was just looking at that in terms of the Civic Common. It goes up Regina Street, but I see it doesn't really encompass the green area, which is the, I guess, the storm river, Laurel Creek that goes through there. Is there a reason for that? Or does the green boundaries of any, like, real definition?
It's truly a visual figure. We really have to understand that, of course, we have mapped this, and it's a vision, and it's a figure in the ground that is to be respected as such. Of course, we can imagine Regina going all the way up, as I mentioned, the view down. In terms of Laurel Creek, Laurel Creek was kind of defined as part of the Willis Way piece, the two bookendings, if I go back. Whoops, wrong way. No, sorry. So let's just look at all three here. You can see in Willis Way, the figure is about Laurel Creek going up, and so it's the bookending of the two parks on Willis Way. Naturally, in this drawing, you see how they all kind of fuse together. We just outlined them particularly to just give a clear sense, but of course, there's no strong border on any of this.
Good. Well done. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Basak. First of all, as the uptown councillor, I want to say I love this document. I think it is extremely inspiring, and I anticipate, I mean, this is not going to be a report that sits on a shelf. This is a great start to a conversation and a pathway to some really vibrant action. So thank you very much for your part in pulling all of this together. The fact that the report speaks to, you know, more trees, better sidewalks, you know, planning for active use of space in winter as well as summer, these are all things that we have been discussing as a community. So I love that here we have a bit of a roadmap of how to get there. And you mentioned earlier tactical urbanism. I love that phrase. So the idea that we can take small actions now on our way to these big actions, I think is going to have a really powerful impact on the way we share space and the way we interact with each other and the spaces around us. But I did want to clarify a couple of things. So this is, if I understand correctly, intended as a high-level guide.
Exactly as you described it.
Yes. So, I mean, how much room, just so that the community knows, how much room is there to change direction for projects within it?
Absolutely. It's, as you described it, it's aspirational. It's generally about tree canopy, walkability, respect of the individual to be able to walk through the city comfortably, be able to celebrate the town, and also be inspired by it. These are the aspirations, and of course, we wanted to land it with these initiatives to prove it. It's like a proof, you know? And it can go in many different directions.
Okay. And when it comes to the concrete one that's been put forward today, the POPs, I've just, this might be a question for staff as opposed to yourself, but can we make sure that, can we have some kind of parameter put in there so that the spaces going forwards are always entirely public? I know in some places we have POPs that are essentially within a building in the form of a courtyard or something like that, but it kind of restricts that feeling of shared space. I'm wondering if that's a parameter that can be explicitly included somewhere?
Yeah, I think it's in there now in terms of the design guidelines. We, the POPs that have been created to this point have been done through, you know, collaboration and negotiation with the developers, but they haven't had the benefit of this type of a detailed guideline. So I think it's improved because there are some very specific, you know, dimensions and orientations and things like that that talk about making sure that there's either wayfinding or design that allows people to understand that they're welcome in that space. Sometimes it is as blatant as signage. So we're hoping that going forward, with the benefit of this, everybody can understand that. And we're not sort of left with the leftover bits that don't work that well. So I think that what you're speaking to is already in there.
Fantastic. Okay, well, thank you, thank you to your team and to your team for bringing this forward. And I look forward to seeing what uptown residents and the rest of the city make of it, because, I mean, ultimately, this is about connection, it's about environment, and it's about people. And it's in uptown, but it's for the entire city. So I'm really excited to see what comes from this. Thank you.
Now through Chair Basak, it's probably, my question's probably for staff. When we, like, it's just with regard to the POPs being on a citywide basis, so is the intention to pull it out of this report and then put it in a few other places? So say, when we do general amendments to the comprehensive zoning bylaw, is it going to be referenced there? Is it going to be placed into the urban design guidelines? Is it a standalone document, that kind of thing?
I think we could see an opportunity to put it in the urban design manual. The decision was made to look at it on a citywide basis because we're growing in a series of nodes and corridors and transit stations. So it didn't, it didn't make sense, this is a somewhat generic document, it's not unique to uptown necessarily, although we've done it through this process. So it seemed to make sense to apply these good principles to, on a citywide basis. And we could embed it in those types of documents to make sure that's understood.
Yeah, I'd really like to see that. I mean, even if it's a separate document under our planning department's website, because it's, like, I think it's very important for people to start thinking about this, if they're even doing land acquisition and starting to think that, okay, the city might be looking to a privately-owned, public-accessible space, and that it doesn't make up for a parkland dedication, for example. Like, I think that, that's the way I understood it, at least. Am I right?
It could be a portion.
Okay. Yeah, so, like, I just, I just feel like, and then the other thing was, is I, it makes reference to Section 37 agreements, right? And so I think too, like, just bringing that all together is really helpful.
Okay, that's, that's good food for thought.
I also have a question. Does anyone else have a question too? Councillor, yeah, councillor Bodley, go ahead.
Through to Chair Basak. Sorry, I missed part of that in the middle of a coughing fit. That was great. Just one thing that I took away from the report, the report was awesome, and I'm really excited about all three of these initiatives. And just something that, with respect to connectivity, something that we heard at the Rec Center Public Information Session in particular was around elderly residents and perhaps residents who have accessibility issues, making sure that they can get to the places that we're trying to drive them to, not just people who have the ability to get there via active transportation or from walking, given the fact that some of these LRT stops are a little bit far away from, say, maybe the greater uptown area, not necessarily just uptown. So I want to make sure that in any of these discussions that we're communicating with the region regarding potentially, you know, unique or different transit options, to be able to help those residents connect to the places that we're trying to connect them to, that maybe not be able to take advantage of some of the stuff that we're working on.
And my question, I had an opportunity to talk to Janice about this, but I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to it, which is the north end of uptown, which is sometimes thought of to be neglected. And so I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to that.
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, these initiatives are, really came out of the public forum and out of, quite honestly, who we were with and how we could draw things. And we had potentially, I think we probably had 40 sheets of trace that were all on the same map, and we layered them up, and these figures actually showed up. So we actually worked directly with the community, as opposed to working with community in mind, with community. And I think one of the things that maybe doesn't appear as clearly as it should is that Regina Street is extremely important, and you can see that it's given a slightly different, darker coloring. And to the mayor's point, we probably could have put a green line going all the way to the northern limit along Regina as this vibrant green street, this really interesting street, the Button Factory Railway Station, it's kind of the kind of hidden gem street of uptown. And to build on that as we move forward and have it have as its view this wonderful combination of these three parks that are connected into the Civic Common. So that's one way that we feel we have connected the north into this plan, but also, we did feel that we wanted the three initiatives to actually be bound in some way by these new gateways.
Great, thank you. And, oh, councillor Henry.
I appreciate all the work here, and I want to circle back to Janice's comment at the beginning about, you know, ground truthing some of this, which was one of my asks back in, back in September. So I just wanted to close the circle and say I really appreciate some of the adjustments that were made to be able to recognize, to recognize that there are some real limitations in here for the speed and the challenges to be able to achieve all of the visions that will need some work. In particular, the changes to the right-of-way of King Street South. I understand from talking to Janice that by them still being in this plan, it means the region has not ruled out the possibility that at some point in the future, there could be some adjustments on King Street South to provide better multimodal connectivity to active transportation. Really hard to do, not anticipating that coming forward, but the fact that they haven't kiboshed that as they try to kibosh so many things in the right-of-way is a positive sign, and I appreciate that. And the other thing I appreciate is seeing in attachment to the very detailed implementation plan, short, medium, and long term, on the actions on the three, on the three moves. And I think that's something that we can all sort of checklist off along the way and see that those, that those come to, come to pass. So I just wanted to close the circle and say I feel heard in what I said back in September, and I appreciate that those have been well reflected in this final document.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. We're all obviously really excited. So we have one delegation, Tracy Van Callsbeek, Executive Director of the Uptown Business Improvement Area.
Thank you, Chair Basak. Well, I'm pleased to stand here representing the BIA, and we're super, super excited about this strategy. Number one, it focuses on uptown, and that's wonderful, and that is kind of what our mandate is. We've been involved throughout the whole process, I believe, and with my predecessor, Patty Brooks, and our staff, we were part of the design draft. We've been supporting the project from behind, we've reviewed drafts and provided some input on that as well. And then I know, Janice, your team has been keeping us abreast of any of the changes that you've been making to the strategy. Exciting that councillor Bonagor, you mentioned about this, this report not sitting on a shelf and collecting dust, we're actually using it at the BIA already. We discussed the report, the draft report during our strategic planning session back in the fall, and we've implemented right into our operating plan. And I'll read a few of the things. It's under our uptown growth, which is very great, that is very synergistic there. One of our objectives was to animate and utilize the current public spaces in the BIA, drawing on the public realm strategy and other resources. So one of my strategies and tactics is to ensure that public spaces, including alleyways and those areas identified by the city of Waterloo's public realm strategy, are being activated and used in and for uptown events and festivals. So just wanted to share that, share our support. We're really, really pleased with how this has all come about, you know, uptown Waterloo is such a growing and evolving place, and it's so great that the city of Waterloo has focused attention on making sure that we have space for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for that delegation? Okay. All right, so we're recommending to approve this strategy and to use it as a guide in public realm improvements. Do I have a mover? Councillor Bonagor, secondaire, councillor Henry, all in favor? That is everyone. Okay, so next up, we have the city of Waterloo Strategic Plan 2019-2022 report with Anna Marie Supriani, did I say that right? Okay. Our staff, city of Waterloo staff, and Margot Bejean, yes, who's a consultant from MBD Insight. Welcome.
Thank you. All righty, so I will just walk us through some context to this project, and Margot will walk us through the content. So tonight, this afternoon, we are bringing to you a culmination of all of the work that has gone into the scan for our strategic plan. And this will begin to launch us into phase three, where we will all begin to develop the plan. So again, I just want to highlight some dates and some next steps. So on March 19th, IPBW Corporate Services and the CAO Office will have workshops to begin to build the plan. On March 28th, Community Services will meet, and council will meet and benefit from the work that's gone before them in terms of building the plan. So you'll have your own workshop on April 10th. From there, we will then come back to council on April 29th. That will be to bring to you the draft strategic plan, and then following that, we will aim to have a completed strategic plan for you and our community on June 24th. Okay? So Margot will take over the presentation from here and walk you through the results of the scan.
Thanks so much, Anna Marie, and thank you all for the opportunity to work on this very exciting project. On behalf of my colleagues at MBD Insight, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. We've had an opportunity to meet with a number of folks, I've spoken to many of you directly on the phone, and the excitement around this process has definitely been contagious. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the context for the work that we're talking about today, the methodology that we use to gather these inputs, and some of the key findings, and the emerging strategic priorities that have come about that will hopefully lay the foundation for some of your discussions around next steps and what the strategic plan will look like. So this is really, in a nutshell, food for thought. It is a context of a distillation of responses that were provided by just under 11,000 various respondents in a number of different survey methodologies, some of which were undertaken by staff, some of which were undertaken by other consultants, and then some of which were undertaken by us as part of this process. As part of our analysis, we've recognized that not all of the statistical findings were statistically significant, but we've tried to compare the quantitative results with the qualitative results, and using, you know, the input of the various, whether it was staff, elected officials, members of the public, and other stakeholders, to be able to arrive at what we see as the recurring themes that are top of mind in this, in the city and for the community. And then this is, as I said, this is the sort of the foundational understanding, a picture of what's important, and it is not necessarily an exhaustive list of everything that you might want to consider in a strategic plan, but this is a reflection of what we So as I said, we're just shy of 11,000 individuals through various surveys and inputs, and some of the statistically significant inputs included the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, Wellbeing Waterloo Regional Survey, and the Travel Wise Commuting Report. There were also a number of staff-led discussions and workshops with members of advisory committees to council, and also got feedback from the public directly through the Engage Waterloo Platform and the Bang the Table Platform as well. As I said, there have been direct interviews, and then also had an opportunity to reflect on the check-in with yourselves when you were asked about what are you hearing on the doorsteps, what are you hearing sort of as a result of your time on the campaign trail? And that also factored into the inputs that we gathered. So we know that Waterloo is a growing city with an increasingly diverse population, and that with that growth and with that increasing diversity come new opportunities and new challenges. Waterloo is a complex environment. It is both home to very affluent and very educated citizens, but there are also citizens who struggle, and residents that, a portion of residents that are living between, are below the low-income measure. And again, that factors into how you plan and how you prioritize activities. We, primarily through the Wellbeing Waterloo Survey, we learned about some issues relating to isolation and discrimination that are also provide some opportunities in the strategic planning process. The Citizen Satisfaction Survey was a statistically significant survey that was done to sort of get a sense of how residents view the city. And the results are exceptional. When you look at similar studies done in other communities across the country, the results of, you know, 94% being satisfied, or, you know, 99% of residents feeling that quality of life is very high, those are exceptionally high results, and something that, you know, Waterloo is definitely a leader in. And we noticed that, you know, one of the... is definitely a leader in. And we noticed that, you know, one of the questions that we asked was around satisfaction with the way that the city is run. And that was just that's, you know, a point in time, that's a, you know, an interpretation. But it did provide some guidance on from the perspective of strategic planning, that we realized that what people are paying attention to and what's top of mind for folks these days is, you know, road repair and maintenance, bylaw enforcement, and and snow removal. So we extrapolate from that, that by focusing, whether it's attention or communication or, you know, effort in those areas, that that's where you're most likely going to be able to move the needle in terms of a strategic process or progress. And I should note that within that sort of 68 percentile, and that's not, you know, you know, the other results are so, so, so strong. And it is not, it's not a weak result. I mean, normally, we see around the 70, 72%. So this, you know, just to put that in context, and of that, there were a good 22% of the respondents who had a neutral, you know, opinion. So they weren't so they weren't necessarily saying that they were unhappy with things. They just had no opinion to share at that time. So I hope you had an opportunity to review some of the strategic themes and priorities that have resulted or have emerged. And there were 10 that have come come forward as a result of those multiple various inputs. And I won't go into all of them because I hope that you've had an opportunity. But we certainly talk about them if you have any questions later. But in some of them, you may see that there is there's opportunity that they might be combined, or that some may become cross cutting themes across all strategic priority areas. But we want in the interest of sort of reflecting what the feedback was, we wanted to be able to highlight these 10 priority areas for your consideration. And these speak to, you know, its residents, it speaks to, it speaks to the feedback that, you know, we discussed the feedback that we had from staff as well. And so these are the these are the themes and the various priorities that emerged. And this, again, is a starting point for discussion. These are things that you may want to think about and then reflect on based on further input and dialogue with staff, and then on your own experience and feedback from from your constituents. So just to give you an idea of how it all works, one of the strategic themes that emerged was the idea of affordability and whether that has to do with housing costs or just, you know, day to day costs. But so if that were to be adopted as a strategic theme, then within that, one of the priorities that emerged that we potential priorities was looking at the development of diverse housing options. And all of that is within the context of what the City of Waterloo can do, because there everything that you undertake has to be looked at in that lens and that you don't necessarily impact on every aspect of a social or economic issue. So within the context of what the city can do, they might prioritize that with the following actions or tactics you might look at and inclusion. Well, we are that that's something that is already in progress is there is an inclusionary zoning study underway. So that fits with a priority that's already been identified and is is in progress. You might, you know, as a next step, assess what the land holdings are that the city has that could support that process and explore strategic partnerships, who can impact this issue and who can sort of move the needle in terms of increasing access and affordability, and then looking at others. So so that's sort of how the strategic planning process fits together. There's an overarching theme. And then within that, there's some high level priority ideas, priority ideas. And then there are actions and tactics. And those are the things that get embedded in the business plans at the departmental level. And those are, you know, when staff sort of, that's when they apply their expertise and are able to figure out how are we going to make this happen? So in terms of next steps, as Anna Marie alluded to, it's, you know, the the next round of discussions and workshops will be refining that list is to understand which of those themes are the ones that we want to focus on for the next four years. You know, are these the right themes? You know, do these support our values and our mission going forward? And then we want to look sort of down the next level of the list of the priorities are that, you know, have we identified the right priorities to support those themes? And then what what are we already doing? And that, you know, the inclusionary zoning study is a great example of something that, you know, we know that affordability is top of mind. And here's something that the city is already doing to to address that priority and that theme. And then, you know, the next part is to to identify the performance indicators to be able to say, this is what we said we were going to do. These are the tactics and actions that we're going to undertake to be able to do it. And this is how we'll know when we've when we've succeeded. And so that is almost as an important part of the discussion as identifying the priorities, because you need to know when you've moved the needle and when you when you've succeeded. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have. It's a it is a fairly extensive document. There's a lot of different data sources. I'm happy to speak to any questions or thoughts you might have on 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 the six scan summary report.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. I saw Counselor Hammer, Mayor Jaworski, others? Counselor Henry?
Through you Chair Chair Vasek. Thank you very much, Margot, for the presentation. There's a lot of work that goes into pulling the environmental scan together and the number of people that you had with with some inputs. I do have three questions, and I'll say all of them, and you can answer them however you want to answer them. You've identified, and I apologize to I'm still coughing, you've identified 10 strategic themes, which is a lot. And I'm understanding through the process that you're going to be narrowing that down. However, how do I'm curious how the how the themes that you've come up with for this strategic plan differ from our current strategic plan or the previous one? And there seem to be in the report, a ranking of the prior of the themes. And is that any different? And then my last question, were there any surprises or aha's from the information that you gleaned from any of the stakeholders?
So admittedly, the 10 themes is is it's too much. You know, ideally, you'd like to have it somewhere, no more than six priority themes, somewhere in that range of four to six. There is alignment with the with the existing strategic plan. It didn't differ that much. But for the for the purpose of facilitating discussion, which is really what this report is supposed to do, we decided not to narrow the focus too much. We didn't want to be too prescriptive. But one thing you may want to look at is, you know, the inclusion, for example, is a theme that came up pretty much universally. You know, and it showed up in different ways. But that it, you know, it's something that that the staff values, it's something that elected officials value, and it's something that the residents value. So perhaps that might be considered not as a strategic theme or a pillar, but that, you know, how do we make that a cross cutting theme across everything that the city does or all of the projects and services that the city delivers? So, you know, that's, that's, I think, is going to be an important discussion to have. And the same thing might be applied to themes like sustainability, because that has, you know, that is a sort of a broad process, cross cutting theme. They weren't intended to be presented in any kind of order, or there is no ranking. So, you know, it's something has to be put first on the list. But no, there is absolutely no ranking assigned. I think you could argue that they all have equal value and are worthy of consideration in your future deliberations. And then in terms of surprises, I would say that I think the, you know, initially, the pleasant surprise was just how engaged and excited the people that I spoke with were about this process and how important it is that, you know, we get this plan right, and that it reflect it reflects the values of this community. I think, you know, the sort of that dichotomy around, you know, that we have a lot of really highly educated and affluent folks, but we also have folks that are struggling. And 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 not so much that it's a surprise, but it's just that that emerged is something that, you know, how it's, how are we going to address that? What, you know, what are we going to do to to reflect who we are? I mean, you know, we need to leverage all the wonderful things that are happening and the strengths that we have. But also, how do we use those strengths to bring other folks that may be, you know, economically disadvantaged along or maybe experiencing social isolation isolation and, you know, those types of impacts? Does that answer your questions?
Very well, thank you.
The counselor from word one essentially stole my question. Your wonderfully inclusive answer gave you the answer. So I'll pass it along.
I have two questions. Are there other questions as well? Well done. Well done, Sandoria. I mean, Counselor Hammer. Yes. I have two questions. One, I just I did email, but then I haven't been able to find the response in my email. So yeah, so one is that I was surprised that the arts wasn't listed in aspirations. I saw words like culturally vibrant or creative approach, but not an explicit mention of the arts and culture, though it was listed in quality of place. So I was just hoping you could speak to that a little bit more.
And that is, I should qualify this by, you know, full disclosure, I'm an artsy ballet teacher, musical theater director. So if, you know, so but I was really trying to reflect what showed up in the feedback. It's not in any way to suggest that it shouldn't be a priority or that. And that's why we, you know, you start from this scan report and then have an opportunity to have more robust discussion. Because I think that's what leadership is. It's it's distilling and bringing your your own influence to this discussion. And so it it was really just a reflection of what was, I mean, the report is a reflection of what was top of mind for the majority of respondents. So again, it's it's not meant to be prescriptive that it can't be or shouldn't be. And I would argue that, you know, there is there is a real opportunity to try to talk about how arts and culture can can support the vision and values.
Thanks a lot. I have, oh, could I ask my one? Or no, I guess the chair should let. Okay, all right, I'm gonna do it. Okay. Yeah. So a couple, it jumped out to me a couple of times, just this this idea of being bold. And so I'd really love to know, do we as a council want to include that being bold? And what would identifying what being bold looks like? Does it mean in the strategic planning process, creating a definition for it perhaps? I guess I just, I think it would be a helpful exercise or question to include in our in the strategic planning for us as a council, because we may all be at different places and where we want to be bold and where we want to sort of be a little bit more conservative perhaps. And so I think it would be a great starting place for us to know where we're each at in terms of building a team with us so that we can move forward in the most bold way possible.
Absolutely. Thank you. And and I did reflect on the question that you shared. And the I think that there is on the April 10th, when you have the workshop, that was a really good information for us to be able to say that that, you know, that might be the best place to start that workshop is sort of getting consensus around on what is what is the appetite for boldness? What? How do you define being bold? And what does it mean? Because that will sort of give you a useful lens from which to evaluate the rest of the strategic priorities and 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 themes. So that that workshop is the plan is to have it scheduled as an opportunity to sort of review and discuss and then prioritize each of each of these strategic themes and priorities. But I think, per your suggestion, I think it would be a really good opportunity to sort of have that initial discussion around, you know, what does it mean to be bold or innovative and and get clarity around that.
Great, thank you. Counselor Henry?
And the answer was part of the other question I had, which was, as we've identified, you know, 10 emerging strategic themes and 37 potential strategic priorities are high numbers on both of those counts, and they need to be lower for this to be actionable. But April 10th is the date that we should be circling in our minds around how we how we turn our attention to that. I'd follow on with Counselor Vasek's thought. And the way I will, the way I will give expression to where I think we can be bold is recognizing that we have limited bandwidth. The background report helps us understand where the folks behind us who implement some of this have feel they have capacity and challenges. And so there's probably a limit on how many bowls you can move down the field at once. And that effort of going through prioritization of strategic planning and key actions, I think, is the expression of where we want to really focus on moving the needle versus what is relatively close to status quo and small increments to to keep the shop running as we as we try to be bold. So that'll be my answer in the conversation on the 10th is what items we put forward that we really want to move the needle on and how and how we describe those in terms of aspirations. But what I did want to, you know, touch on and highlight, not as a question, but just out of the presentation that that you've provided is to identify what significant shift I think is happening there. And that's how we take those strategic themes and the potential, you know, key actions and how those then, you know, those key actions and the measurables from them, you've connected to the business planning process, which I think is really important. The business plan documents that council gets at budget time are culled from those existing actions staff have found that fit the template that we provided, rather than being an action of the departments and the divisions figuring out how to live the strategic plan and how to bring it to fruition in a in a in an integrated way that's measurable and connects to all of this. So rather than be now culled from existing outputs and change, they are a key output that will drive how the departments exist over the next three years and then the one year into the next council term. And that's a significant change in in how we've done that process at the at the city. I think it's worth highlighting that it's part of this here today, as as many staff are present, because that's a change that's coming and that I see is really, really important for being able to translate bold visions into into actions that we can transparently see through through budgets and and those other documents. So I appreciate that that's in there. That was, if I have a key ask, it's more than any individual priority. It's the process that lets us implement them.
I have one question about process. You've given us three kind of quick win places to look at, you know, like roads, bylaw, and snow. I'm just curious how those three arose? Were people choosing from a list of priorities? Or did they just percolate up from conversation?
They were given a list of services that the city delivers, and then there's a ranking. It's within in the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. And it was, I mean, it's one result of many, many inputs. The reason that it was highlighted was more just for the fact that it is sort of a quick win that that and I would imagine that it was probably and based on the, you know, the feedback I heard during the council session, you know, talking about what's hot off the campaign trail, that a lot of those issues seem to be top of mind. So and it's not to suggest that that those three priority, three areas require more resources. It's really just to suggest that those are top of mind. Those are things that people are asking about. Those are things that people are measuring their satisfaction against, and therefore probably worthy of consideration in terms of communication and, you know, engagement around those issues. So that, and you know, that also opens the door to having, you know, a broader discussion around what should we be caring about, what matters, and what makes a healthy community. But this was, that was really just highlighted as a sort of starting point where that, you know, because this is really where we're starting from at this point in time.
Thank you. I was just curious. Thanks. Okay, it looks like there are no further questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. I think we're also all really pumped about this session and to move forward with strategic planning, at least I am. Yeah, of course, everyone is. I don't know. At least I am. Everyone is. So I'm gonna, do I have a mover to receive this report as information? Counselor Bodley, Counselor Freeman, all in favor? Everyone? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna Marie. Okay, we're gonna take a five minute recess. Thanks.